Thank you. Well, good evening and welcome everyone. I'd like to call the city council for city council meeting of two thousand and twenty five. Thursday for Thursday, January ninth to order. At this time, let's see, where are we? I've asked Councilmember Lebo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated, everybody. Thank you so much, Councilmember Levo, and welcome to all our guests here. And I know we have a special furry guest back there as well. So my dog sends her regrets she could not join us tonight. With that, I'd entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
Move the adoption of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did you?
Oh, I thought we were gonna pull the, or did we already the?
Ah, thank you for the reminder. We are going to, I'd entertain a motion for, we'll start again, for removal, amending the agenda to remove the CIP plan adoption.
I move to remove resolution twenty five dash nineteen ninety seven, adopting the capital improvement plan for twenty five to thirty.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion about removing the capital improvement plan from the agenda? Are you none of those in favor of removing the capital improvement plan from the agenda? Signify by saying aye. Thank you online, folks. All the, and with that, I'd entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda as amended, please.
Remove the adoption of the amended agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any ayes, the ayes have it, that passes unanimously. Wow, sausage making, folks. Here we go. All right, with that, we're moving on to public comments. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or any other topic the council might have purview, purview or control over. If the comments are of the nature that the council does not have influence or control over, then the mayor may request the speaker to suspend their comments. The council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three minute time limit. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Right, we have several folks here, hopefully I can. Let's make sure, let's see. Okay. Mr. Hay, is that Haynes? Did you want to speak today? Oh, okay, okay, thank you. You're fine, no problem. Dan and Liz Murky, if I'm spelling that, or pronouncing that correctly. Please join us at the podium.
I made him do it. We experienced power outage and it's knowing that City Light was gonna be here and listening to comments, this is the appropriate time to bring this in. First of all, I just want to compliment the hard work that went on right at the corner of our lot. I mean, two power poles on each corner of a lot on fortieth place, you know, went down. And I think it was a total of five poles totaled that needed to be replaced. It appeared that the work was gonna start very slowly, but I think there was work that wasn't visible to us. You know, the poles had to be delivered, blah, blah, blah. But I guess we've, I have come today because what is left on the corner of our private drive, my address is one eight four six eight fortieth place, is a cutoff pole. They've moved the power to the pole that they replaced. But what's going up our private drive is a very low slung two wires. One that's almost lying on our chain link fence and then is also being supported by a rododendron. And it clearly is sitting on our cedar hedge. And from talking, talking, talking to anybody that's come to the site since we've miraculously got our lights on after four and a half days. They're not really sure when that telephone and cable company is responsible to lift that cable up that's going up our private drive and everybody kind of like don't hold your breath. And so, you know, we trim that hedge every summer, we trim those rododendrons. And I don't like it there and it doesn't sound like once they get the power on, anybody was concerned, but us.
We are a little concerned for overhead clearance for delivery vehicles.
Yeah.
It's pretty low.
Very low.
Okay. Well, we thank you for your public comment. We're not allowed to respond, but we will make sure staff follows up with you. Thank you very much for coming. Let's see. I believe that's, is there anybody else? I don't have anyone else signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else in the council chambers that would like to make public comment at this time? Okay, with that, we will close public comment. Thank you, those of you that made comments. Always welcome that. There you are. Okay, moving on, we are going to, we have a series of proclamations. And the first one, the first one, of course, is quite bittersweet, honoring President Jimmy Carter, who he lost just recently. Whereas the city of Lake Forest Park recognizes and honors outstanding individuals who, whose leadership, public service, and humanitarian efforts have made a profound and positive impact on our nation and the world. And whereas James Earl Jimmy Carter's junior served as the thirty ninth president of the United States from nineteen seventy seven to nineteen eighty one, championing human rights, peace and diplomacy, and seeking thoughtful solutions to global challenges. And whereas President Carter's commitment to humanitarian work, including the establishment of the Carter Center, and his decades of service with Habitat for Humanity, set an extraordinary example of compassion, volunteerism, and devotion to human dignity. And whereas during his lifetime, President Carter was celebrated for his efforts in advancing world health, resolving conflicts and promoting democracy culminating in his receipt of the Nobel Peace Prize in two thousand and two. And whereas while President Carter's humility, dedication to public service and tireless work for the betterment of humankind have inspired generations of leaders and citizens, including those in the city of Lake Forest Park, to live with integrity, pursue peaceful resolutions and to extend the helping hand to the most vulnerable amongst us. And whereas upon his passing, our community pays tribute to President Carter's enduring vision of an America and a world guided by respect, generosity and unity. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Lake Forest Park do hereby solemnly proclaim our admiration and gratitude for the life and legacy of President Jimmy Carter. We celebrate his remarkable contributions to our country and the global community. And we encourage all residents to reflect on his enduring example of service, compassion and leadership. Signed this ninth day of January, two thousand and twenty five. Vice, excuse me, Deputy Murbody.
If I may, I wanted to just add to that excellent proclamation. The fact that Jimmy Carter actually presided over the Camp David peace awards. And I don't hear that mentioned as much, but as a landmark in the Middle East, where Egypt and Israel were constantly fighting and that agreement has remained in place since that time, since his presidency. And what a remarkable accomplishment to have a peace agreement of that nature in such a contentious region that has stood the test.
You, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. And with that, we're moving on to the next proclamation, Martin Luther King Junior Day. Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you. Whereas the Reverend Martin Luther King Junior has inspired this country and the world with his vision and dedication to freedom and equality. And whereas Martin Luther King Junior became the voice of the American Civil Rights Movement in the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties with eloquent speeches and nonviolent action that resulted in landmark legislation, the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty four. And whereas Martin Luther King Junior was assassinated on April fourth nineteen sixty eight at thirty nine years of age. And whereas the voice of Martin Luther King Junior was not silenced and his faith and courage in proclaiming the message of liberty and justice for all lives on. And whereas federal legislation signed into law on November second nineteen eighty three established a legal holiday to be celebrated on the third Monday in January honoring the life of civil rights leader Martin Luther King Junior, who was born on January fifteenth nineteen twenty nine. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Lake Forest Park do hereby proclaim Monday, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty five as Martin Luther King Junior Day in the city of Lake Forest Park. And we urge all citizens to join in the special observance signed this ninth day of January, two thousand and twenty five.
Thank you, Councilmember, very much. We're moving on to another important proclamation, celebrating the bald eagle.
Thank you. Whereas the bald eagle has long stood as an enduring symbol of freedom, strength and the indomitable spirit of the United States of America. Having been designated a national emblem in seventeen eighty two. And whereas on December twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four, the bald eagle was officially declared the national bird of the United States. And whereas the bald eagle once faced the threat of extinction, but has made a remarkable recovery through the dedicated efforts of conservationists, policymakers and communities nationwide, demonstrating the power of environmental stewardship. And whereas Lake Forest Park, located amid the natural beauty of the Pacific Northwest, is proud to provide habitats supporting a wide variety of wildlife, including bald eagles that grace our skies and enrich our ecosystem. And whereas the presence of bald eagles in our community reminds us of the ongoing need to protect and preserve the rich biodiversity of our waterways, forests and open spaces for the benefit of current and future generations. And whereas the citizens of Lake Forest Park take pride in fostering a spirit of environmental responsibility and respect for all wildlife, including the majestic bald eagle. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Lake Forest Park do hereby proclaim our admiration and gratitude for the bald eagle as a cherished symbol of our national heritage and a beacon of conservation success. As we urge all citizens to join in this recognition, sign this day, ninth day of January, two thousand and twenty five.
Thank you, Vice Chair Frotati. I was, I, we added this to the agenda because I was stunned to learn on December twenty fourth that the bald eagle was finally the the national bird of the United States, which took over fifty years for one gentleman to get that to happen. Congress finally acted. With that, we get to move on to something really special. We're going to be, the chief is going to be introducing our, one of our newest officers. Definitely our smallest. And Officer Coleman, you want to come up and join the chief here?
All right.
Welcome, everybody.
So, good evening, Mayor and council members and community. So before introducing Officer Coleman, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the history of our Lake Forest Park K nine program. This vital program began in two thousand and four with Officer Lozaro and K nine Dakota, a drug detection dog. In two thousand and five, I had the privilege of continuing the program with K nine Dakota, serving the community until two thousand and eleven. So from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and twenty, Officer Carswell and his canine partner Hector carried the torch, furthering the program's legacy. Our city has used K nine program for over fifteen years and has always played an essential role in the safety and viability of Lake Forest Park. These highly trained teams provide invaluable support in drug detection, critical operations and proactive policing efforts. Beyond their operational duties, our canines have been instrumental in building community connections by participating in events such as school visits, neighborhood gatherings and public safety demonstrations. These interactions foster trust and engagement while also serving as a powerful recruiting tool by showcasing the professionalism and capabilities of our department. It's my pleasure to introduce Officer George Coleman, one of our dedicated law enforcement officers. This June, Officer Coleman will have ten years of experience at Lake Forest Park PD and has recently completed the extensive training to become a certified canine handler. He's now partnered with Canine Bella. Officer Coleman is not only an asset to our department, but also to our community. And as he and Canine Bella will play an important role in public outreach and education, please join me in welcoming Officer Coleman and his new partner Bella. Officer Coleman's gonna do a little presentation about his program and Matt will have that pulled up. Matt, do you want to do the slides or do you want to? Okay, he's gonna do the slides, so you just let him know what you mean.
First off, good evening, everybody. I am Officer Coleman. Like you've said, I've been here for ten years, coming up on ten years and I attend to go. So I'll be here with you guys. This short presentation is just to introduce myself and my canine partner Bella. About me, I have been here since June first of two thousand and fifteen. Since then, I've had the honor of serving on the North Sound Metro SWAT team on top of patrol and now the canine unit, which is the best thing in law enforcement, in my opinion. So my past is I've had many different careers, served in the Navy for twelve years, served in Operation Enduring Freedom, Iraqi Freedom, done seven and a half deployments onboard ships, personal trainer since eighteen, massage therapist, woodworker, I've done a lot. Go on to the next slide. So Tarheel, Tarheel K nine, that's where we sourced the Canine Bella from. They are very known in the law enforcement field. For canines, they do forty law enforcement dogs a year on average. In that photo, you see Jerry Bradshaw, which is on the right with one of his dogs. He does a lot of competitions, wins them all. And his fiancee, Taylor Jones, who she is the lead canine instructor for law enforcement dogs. Next slide. With the detection program, they specialize in narcotics, which that's what Bella specializes in, explosives, article retrieval, evidence retrieval, firearms tracking and patrol dogs. That's the apprehension of police dogs that go out and chase the bad guys. Next slide. So my time at Tarheel, in that photo, those are all different, in that slide, all different photos that I took of several different agencies that were there from Tennessee, Kentucky, Delaware, the Federal Reserve. That's me in a bite suit. I did a lot of bite suit work for our bite dogs in the class. And then the bottom right is the two of us flying back November first. The next slide. Like I mentioned, Bella is strictly narcotics and she searches for what I call the hard four, which is methamphetamine, heroin, cocaine and fentanyl. The state just passed fentanyl to be one of the mandatory drugs that we have to be certified in. In that past September eleventh of this year, so now all police canines, if they're not on the odor of fentanyl, they're almost useless. So there's nine of us in our region, from me being far south to Lake Stevens and Arlington is the furthest north. So we do almost everybody, almost on the west side of Washington. Next slide. The benefits, Chief mentioned several of the benefits here. One of the big ones is community engagement and bridging gaps. Law enforcement has this weird stigma. However, everybody loves a dog. And so this is a great way to bridge that gap with people who are either afraid to talk to us, but they're like, I'd love to talk to your dog. And you, it brings people in. It also allows us to be put on the map more so with having a fentanyl trained dog. That way we can, we do partner with several other agencies, also with Homeland Security, DEA and Border Patrol. That's it.
I don't know if you have any questions for Officer Coleman, but there's one thing that I want to just make sure that everybody is aware of. We could not have done this because everybody knows our budgets and how tight things are. We could not have done this without the North Sound Police Foundation. They spent about a hundred thousand dollars for this to happen. The biggest portion of that is a patrol car, a patrol truck that he'll be getting that's brand new for canine. That's the biggest portion. But everything was paid for by the foundation, his flights out there, the per diem, the food, all of the training, the dog. Everything was covered by the foundation. So it's, it needed to be put out there that we're so thankful and grateful because I don't think we would have been able to pull this off without that. So. You have any questions?
Colleagues, questions for Bella first? You're on the mic. You only have three minutes. Any, any questions? Well, I could tell you that when I was talking to George earlier, quite a while ago, actually, the buzz is all around the elementary schools. The kids all want to meet Bella. Brookside is completely excited about, you know, connecting with the new puppy. So we're very excited and we thank you all for what you do and big thanks for the, oh, Semra, please.
I mean, it's the ultimate question. Who's the good girl? Who's our good girl? Thank you so much for showing us Bella. Really appreciate having a canine unit again.
Thank you, absolutely. Vice Chair, excuse me, Deputy Murbody, I keep saying Vice Chair.
Do share our thanks with the foundation. I do think it is an important part of our police department. We're proud of our police department, but this is like you know, the cherry on top really. And Bella is pretty beautiful. So I didn't know about the Tarheels training, so that was really interesting. But please pass on our thanks to the foundation.
Will do. colleagues, any other questions or comments? Thank you so much, George. Appreciate it. Thank you, Bella. Chief, we're moving on to the life-saving award presented to Officer Frankie Montague and Sergeant Rob Gross. Gentlemen.
So I was gonna say dog and pony show having our director, finance director's pony here, and then I've got the dog and pony show, but. All right. So good evening, mayors and council again. I'm gonna, I want to thank you for the opportunity to recognize the efforts of two officers who went above and beyond in a life-saving situation. Just like our dog we were talking about here, fentanyl has become a threat to our community due to its extreme potency, making it fifty to a hundred times stronger than morphine. Even small amounts can cause fatal overdoses. Fentanyl not only devastates individuals, but also impacts families and communities, leading to grief, trauma and a strain on public services. On the evening of August twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four, Lake Forest Park Police Officer Frankie Montague responded to a call about a suspicious vehicle near the intersection of Bothell and Ballinger Way. Dispatch reported that a vehicle was stopped in the middle of the road with the driver's head resting on the headrest and eyes closed. A concerned citizen who called nine one one suspected the driver might be experiencing a overdose. Upon arrival, Officer Montague found the driver unconscious and not breathing. The driver's skin was turning blue and his eyes were unresponsive. With quick thinking, Officer Montague first attempted to rouse the driver by nudging and rubbing his chest, but the efforts were unsuccessful. He then unbuckled the seatbelt and with help from passerby, carefully moved the driver to the ground. Officer Montague administered a dose of Narcan and immediately began CPR. Sergeant Gross arrived on scene shortly after and he administered a second dose of Narcan. Officer Montague continued performing CPR until medical personnel arrived and took over, eventually reviving the driver. Unfortunately, the subject refused any further medical treatment and was ultimately charged with DUI. With the combined actions of the officer's quick assessment, timely actions, along with the help of a passerby, officers were credited by fire and medical personnel of successfully saving the driver's life. In recognition of their heroic efforts, Officer Montague and Sergeant Gross will be receiving the life-saving award. We are proud to honor these individuals today for their professionalism, bravery and unwavering commitment to our community's safety. Thank you, gentlemen. I have some certificates for them. This is for you, Sergeant Gross, I have a letter from you. And same with you. And then a chief's coin, which they definitely earn. And then we have pins for the life-saving award. These pins can go on the uniforms, just like you've seen in some military dress that they wear, but this is a star for saving this person's life.
Thank you, gentlemen. Well, thank you, Chief and officers. Day in, day out, our officers are putting their their lives at risk, but also helping others. And we so sincerely appreciate all the tremendous effort that they do for our community. We deeply value our police department. With that, we're moving on to another presentation. This one is Seattle City Light. We have some guests from Seattle City Light. Let's see, our friends here, we have Don Lindell, General Manager, Andrew Strong, Environmental Engineering and Project Delivery Officer. This is what happens. I can't pronounce things after a couple of weeks of not using my voice a lot. Mike Haynes, Chief Operating Officer and Craig Smith, Chief Customer Officer. Am I missing anyone? Miss Lindell? Make sure I've got everybody. Well, welcome. Thank you for joining us. We sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take the mic down and if you need to adjust things around, the podium goes up, the mic goes, you can do as you wish.
All right, thank you. Well, everyone else will be taller than me, so. Do we have a, we should have a presentation. Oh, thank you.
I think Matt, Matt will tee, Mr. McLean will tee that up for us here.
Everybody's teeing me up. Well, while that's come, there it is. All right. So, good evening. My name is Don Lindell. And I'm the General Manager and Chief Executive Officer for Seattle City Light. And it's a pleasure to be with you, Mayor French and city council members. Thank you so much for the invitation to get to know you and share with you the work that we do. And sometimes along with your staff to provide safe, reliable, affordable and environmentally responsible power to the residents and our customers in Lake Forest Park. We want to acknowledge upfront and recognize that your community was hit hard with the bomb cyclone and the restoration took a long time. I'm sure it felt much longer in your seats and I fully understand the significant challenges that you all faced with that. So I want to acknowledge that upfront. The bomb cyclone brought extreme weather conditions that caused extensive damage to our infrastructure. Despite these extenuating circumstances, we remain steadfast in our commitment to restoring power as quickly and safely as possible. Our immediate focus during and following the storm was on getting critical infrastructure like hospitals and schools back up and running to ensure the safety and well-being of our employees and our communities. Many of the outage in Lake Forest Park were more challenging to address due to the nature of the damage, including downed trees and blocked roads. The damage included a stretch of five poles that we heard about earlier and that needed replacement, which took more time. All that said, of the three utilities that were hit severely with this bomb cyclone, we restored two days earlier than the next closest and a week and two days earlier than the, than the third one. That does not help when you are out of power for four and a half to five days, and I do understand that. So this evening, we will share with you information about investments that we are making on our infrastructure to improve reliability. We'll share information on the storm itself and the after-action review that we've completed, as well as technology investments that are needed to help in our communication during an event like this one. Okay, so again, with me tonight, I have Andy Strong, who is our Environmental Engineering and Project Delivery Officer. We've got Mike Haynes, our Chief Operating Officer, and Craig Smith, our Chief Customer Officer. So we've got a brief presentation to share and then we'll look forward to an engaging discussion for the rest of the time. We always have the obligatory fun facts about City Light. The only one I really want to talk about is the the last one, which is that in two thousand and five, Seattle City Light became the first utility to achieve a hundred percent net carbon neutrality. We note that's both for generation and operationally. So what that means is for the small amount of power that we have to buy off the market each year to meet our hottest and coldest days, we offset that with verifiable wrecks. We also offset all travel with our gasoline-powered heavy-duty trucks, my travel if I fly somewhere for training and also the rest of the staff. So we offset all of the carbon that we generate. And it is something that we were the first utility in the U.S. to do, perhaps the world. I think I'm gonna push twice. Nope, we're good. Okay, I do also want to. Oops. I think I'm gonna push twice. Nope, we're good. Okay, I do also want to talk about our reliability um in compared to other large municipal utilities. It is true that in the Northwest, we have some unique challenges with the um heavy, heavy forests that we all love, and that also causes some challenges um during wind events and storm events. However, um we also want to note that we've got a lot of aging infrastructure, and that aging infrastructure is um problematic for us. And so this, what this graph shows, if we look at the Y-axis, are the average outage minutes per year per customer. And then we've got on the bottom, we've got um the years. And so if we look at twenty eighteen, um we can, we can note that the dotted black line is the industry average for large municipal utilities. There are about thirty of us, uh thirty large municipal utilities in the United States, and we were, we are the green line above that, and we were pretty close um for the first three years there through twenty twenty. And then following that, we start to see us uh worsen. Our outage minutes are uh are longer at, and you can see other utilities have have also brought their line down. And I bring this to point out that we do have a lot of old infrastructure and that we've got to do some investing in order to replace that infrastructure. So we've um had the ability to live off the investments that our forbearers made, and we've got a lot of assets, including over three hundred miles of direct buried cable that is over sixty years old and well past its useful life. So um it is now time to make some investment, and we wanted to be able to demonstrate that. We have a second factor impacting this, and that is that um we uh delayed in negotiating um with our unions all across the city, not just in Seattle City Light, but all across the city, uh and delayed raises for about three years. That means that in year two and year three and part of year four, we underpaid in comparison to market. So as we had people leave, it became very uh difficult and increasingly difficult to replace that, those uh staff members. We have rectified that this year, and we are hiring. It did put us down six crews that had an impact on this restoration effort. Finally, I wanted to talk about our rate increases, given that we are looking to have some investment. So our system-wide average rate increase is five point four percent. However, for residential customers, and this is a residential, excuse me, area of the city, um the residential rate increases are four point one percent for this year and four point eight percent for next year. We've got some comparisons up there, um so you can see the investments that other utilities are making and um our need to catch up to those investments or either are making or have made and then are able to come down from those. All right. So with that, I am going to uh turn this over to Andy Strong, and he will talk about our electric grid investments and our reliability.
Mayor French, uh council members, thank you for inviting us here tonight. Uh as a dog owner, I particularly enjoyed meeting Bella tonight. So let me walk through, if I can, uh a description of of the distribution system for Lake Forest Park. So um the main feeders for uh City of Lake Forest Park are fed out of the Shoreline Substation, remarkably enough in Shoreline. Over the past ten years, uh we've invested more than twenty-one million dollars just in the substation itself. It has uh three new uh large transformers, such as you're seeing there. That's actually a photo uh of one of the transformers being replaced. And along with that, um a substantial investment in the controls, the switching, and um some of the miscellaneous uh gear system that goes along with with substation. Um out of that substation, there's four main feeders that uh feed uh Lake Forest Park. Um, what is a feeder? Well, it's a main distribution line that feeds a substantial um amount of of homes and businesses in the area. Um, most of those feeders are overhead. Uh about twenty percent of the system that's feeding Lake Forest Park is underground. Within that feeder system, that actually has some of the most advanced control systems that we have on our systems today. In fact, we have a major effort in the utility to do uh what's called flizer installations. What does flizer stand for? It's a fault location, uh inspection, and um forgot what the P was. Fault location, isolation, and service restoration devices. So what these devices do is as soon as there's a major fault on the system, um it automatically reroutes feed to get the majority of of non-affected systems back online. So a fault location will remain isolated, but the systems around it can come back online rather than at where the um protection advice uh device is. So in other words, the majority of the feeder is not affected. It gets isolated. So that gets, that reduces uh the amount of time the majority of people uh at a fault are out of power, and it helps us isolate where we have an issue in our system. Uh so that's all positive. Um, our um our feeders are relatively new. They're certainly within their overall span of life. So that's good news as well. Uh, one thing we did notice, and and I'll uh get into this a bit more as we talk about um outages over the past five years. Uh, we did notice a trend in some of our underground uh transformers. We were getting a large amount of failures in the in the underground system. So we had an effort to replace the majority of those um about five years ago. Uh, so that helps uh from the perspective of our system. Where we still need to make a better effort is on our wooden utility poles. So um just as a matter of interest, um City Light has about a hundred and ten thousand poles, towers, things of that nature in our our asset inventory. Uh of those, about ninety-two thousand of them are wooden utility poles. Of those, about eighteen hundred fifty um wooden utility poles serve uh this region. Um, we have done uh asset survey. We have a good um history of our our overall wooden utility pole assets. Uh, we have eighteen in this area that uh we need to replace relatively quickly. It's called a P one condition, which is our worst condition. We know about them. We have work orders on them. We're working on permitting to get those replaced. And then we have an additional one hundred and seventy-two that are P two, P three poles. That means we need to replace them in a three-to-five-year time zone because um, you know, they're old enough or bad enough condition where they're at risk. Um, so that's a major effort for uh for this area. There was definitely a question out there um tree wire and why we don't use them as a uh as a matter of rule. So what is tree wire? Um, normal distribution wire just consists of like a aluminum or aluminum alloy strand. Uh what tree wire does is it adds a layer of sheathing that um helps it if it comes in contact with an individual tree branch or similar. I'm almost embarrassed to show this because we have beautiful samples of really large cable, but our asset management team just moved, and this is the best I could do. But within this, and you're gonna have to believe me on this, there's a core of copper. In this case, this is a smaller diameter wire. Um, most often for distribution systems, this would be aluminum. This would be a bare aluminum um cabling for our distribution system now. Um, tree wire does add this layer of sheathing. And again, that can help prevent an issue if um if a tree branch were to to strike it for any instance. Um, so our engineering team did go through and they did do a study uh of using tree wire at one point. Um, but there's, there's some complications with it. While tree wire is effective in brushing off, no pun intended here, uh the occasional contact with a bra- branch, uh the fault is not addressed if there's a damaging incident, like in this last storm event, a number of trees, a number of significant branches contacted our conductor system, um you know, bringing poles, bringing um the the cable to the ground. The other issue with this is heat is the enemy of any uh system's conductivity and lifespan. So um when you have this type of a covering, um and it's a hot day and there's a hot, a high usage of the system um for air conditioning or other means, this heats up, and it it can lead to failures in and of itself, um and it can reduce the the longevity of of the um of the cable. And because of that, in order to get um the same amount of energy uh through, um you would have to upsize this significantly. And and upsizing that means you've got to change out a significant number of our wooden utility poles to something of a higher classification, higher spec. The other thing um that is an issue is if if this is brought to the ground because of an event, because of a tree coming down or because of of significant weight, um um, you know, causing an event, this does not fault out. And so those people on the ground are at risk if uh they come in contact with the cabling. Um, that makes it a danger to the public. It makes it a danger to our crew. Uh this is also much, much harder for our crews to uh be able to uh manipulate. Does that all make sense? I want to stop and ask if there's any questions on that before continuing.
colleagues, any questions? Okay. Don't see our friends on. Just checking. Uh, Councilman Riddle and and um Councilmember Saunders, do you have any questions at this point? Or we, should we continue?
Please continue.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Please continue.
So I did want to go into the the past four years, and I was looking at it. I realized that the data is actually more representative of the last five years. Unscheduled outages are just those events like you see in the background there. You know, that was a um snapshot of our storm response, and you could see that the crews had done a a some work replace or removing a tree that had uh come down and taken our lines down. Those type of events, bird and animal strikes, have accounted for about sixty percent of the unscheduled outages in this region. Uh, equipment failures are about thirty percent, and other incidences like car pull, car pull is when a car literally hits a pole and it and it brings it down to the ground. Um, and pole fires accounted for about ten percent. Uh so as I go through the list, trees are are the vast majority of our our outages in in this particular region. Before I turn it over to Mike Haynes, who have the next few slides, any questions I can answer now? I'm I'm certainly happy to come back and answer more.
Vice chair for Tony.
Gracie.
Please. Hi. Well, thank you so much for your presentation so far. Um, the tree wire uh is interesting to me because um this is not related to the um bomb cyclone outage, but looking with an eye towards the future, will that have to be upgraded as more people turn to heat pumps, get E V chargers in their homes and things like that?
So um what we're, so the good thing about our work at at the Shoreline Substation is, you know, we had a glimpse into the future. We knew that there is such thing as electrification coming up. The transformers there have been upsized from what they were when they were originally installed in the early fifties. We are adequately sized for electrification in this region as of now. It's hard to come up with a scenario where uh we're overloading our system in the next ten to twenty years. Certainly other areas um of of our uh service territory, that's not the case. We're gonna have to add additional substation. We're gonna have to do additional infrastructure work. But for this region, for right now, for what we can see with uh E V chargers, um we're adequately sized. Uh and that's not to discount that there might be localized areas that we'll look at, of course.
Customer Goldman.
Yes, thanks. Um so earlier, you mentioned that roughly twenty percent of Lake Forest Park uh on utilities are underground. Have you done cost-benefit analyses about if it makes sense to increase the amount of underground uh power lines?
I am so glad you asked that. You know, because it comes up. It it comes up a lot as as we move forward into the future, uh and we have more of these type of events, right? Um it's it's definitely something that has sparked a lot of interest, both internally and externally to uh City Light. The, there's a number of issues with going uh underground, and and maybe let me account for some of those. Um, as as I was uh getting ready for this, I I did pull up a Edison Electric Institute uh study uh that very, very much mirrors our own uh research into undergrounding. Um, we have a number of underground systems. I think, let's see, so of our twenty-six hundred eighty miles of distribution electric system, uh nine hundred and forty-one miles are underground. Um, so we have invested in that. The issue with it is the cost of installation for underground system versus overhead is about ten to one. For right now, we're using about six point three million dollars a mile to underground a system, and overhead is somewhere in the seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar um um, you know, figure. Um, undergrounding is mostly used for areas of aesthetics, and and let me get into that a little bit. So again, Edison Electric Institute had the same figure, costing about ten times what it costs to install overhead uh systems. For the first uh ten to fifteen years, underground systems are inherently more reliable than overhead systems. But after that, there's a rapid drop-off in the reliability of underground systems. Of immediate impact to uh residences and to to um commercial buildings is if there is an issue in our underground system, it's really hard to locate. And then once you've located, it's really hard to access it, and it takes a number of different crews to find, locate, um, you know, get the issue to air, make the repair, and restore uh the area before energizing it. With an overhead system, if I'm a crew member, I'm driving down the road, I see something like this in the background, I know exactly what I have to do. I know how to fix it and how quickly I can get it back in service. And it is that uh rapid degradation of an underground system uh over time that's that really adds to the maintenance and response challenges that we had. We have um Don mentioned before, we have a very, very large project within the utility of replacing some direct buried underground cabling. It's about three hundred miles of our system. And um you're looking at an investment of well over two billion dollars to do that, and we have to do that in pretty rapid succession. We really want to do that over the next decade or so. Um, so that's a huge investment to our infrastructure. Um, one of the uh utilities that was quoted in this uh quoted that um converting uh overhead assets to underground would require about a hundred and twenty-five percent rate increase to their customers. And and that would be some of the challenges, right, of how And and that would be some of the challenges, right, of how do we sell that type of an undergrounding program to um, you know, to to the citizens of Seattle, to the citizens of Lake Forest Park? Thank you. Any, any, did I answer everything?
Sorry, did you have a follow-up? Please, Lori.
Yes.
Hi, thank you very much. Um, uh, and I just wanted to say I am a strong supporter of Seattle City Light and Public Power. Um, in my, before I retired, uh, I had different jobs where I interacted collaboratively with Seattle City Light and its staff over many decades. Um, most recently, when I was an executive at Bonneville Power, uh, I was in charge of environment. So, well, I managed the environmental compliance for all our substations. But I also negotiated successfully with the city our upgraded power line through the Cedar River watershed. So um, I I have nothing but overall um positive at a framework for Seattle City Light, though this outage was very stressful. I have a few questions on your presentation. Um, one is equipment failure thirty percent. Does that figure up over time because of your aging infrastructure?
Yeah, I think it's fair to say, um, yes. I mean, Don addressed earlier how we do have a major effort out to really update some of our older systems. Um, you know, the direct buried cable notwithstanding, we do have other challenges and and we are in fact um, going through and uh doing substantial work in our substations, doing substantial work on some of our control systems. Um, you know, up upgrading other systems. Uh, we've had a major effort of the last uh six, uh, actually closer to five years of uh pole replacement. Uh, we replace anywhere from sixteen-hundred to, well, our low figure is eleven-hundred on the the twenty-twenty, which was a COVID year, uh, which impacted us getting um work done. That that program's going to continue to perpetuity. Um, it was a much more rapid replacement than we used to do. Um, we do have, uh, again, other underground systems that we need to address and we do have uh overhead systems that need to be updated.
So specifically, um, in Lake Forest Park, you mentioned you have increased funding in your asset management plan for pole replacement and uh replacement of underground uh transformers. Um, so specifically in Lake Forest Park, is is that going to be an active effort in our community for those upgrades? And do you have sufficient funding in the budget for what you flagged as needed for asset management in our community?
Well, um, maybe put in the cart before the horse a little bit. We are going to be seeking additional funding for our underground system. We, we have uh a certain amount in our budget to replace a small amount now, but we're, we're going into a much, much greater effort and and that's in an upcoming budget session is when we'll ask for that.
Well, certainly with climate change, um, and the uh weather events that we've been seeing, that would make sense. And I certainly think ratepayers would be willing. Con- considering that, um, I've lived here thirty years and all of our longest outages have been in the last four years. Um, so certainly, uh, there's an aspect of equipment and infrastructure.
Absolutely, yeah. And that's, so I, the numbers I believe are, there's twenty-six total underground um transformers and replaced eighteen of them and then the remaining um are well under their service life. Uh, and they're deemed as being adequate at this point. Um, doesn't mean that they're, that future proves us for anything, but I think at this point, from an investment perspective, uh, Lake Forest Park is stable other than the wooden utility poles that we've, we need to get done.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you. I have a few questions. Um. Do you, have you ever mapped out like, like steep slopes and other high-risk areas within L F P to kind of target what that risk is in like very specific areas? I'm thinking coming down twenty-fifth, we've had a tree basically a couple of times a year that keeps going down on that road because there's a steep slope uphill that's um not as stable as it probably should be. So is that something that you guys have come through and evaluated the community for those at-risk areas?
I can't speak to all of that. Um, so we have LiDAR of our old service territory. We can identify tree species with the, with the knowledge that we have. It is something that veg management uses um often for uh for some of their work. Uh, vegetation management, of course, is is part of Mike's team. Um. And and I I know that they do use it in in some degree to analyze work ahead. Uh, I can't speak to how much um that is used in totality. But yes, we, we do know where our steep slopes are. We know where some of our uh geographical challenges are. Uh, but I can't speak to how much that's used.
Okay. And again, they might not, it sounds like you're not the great, greatest person to answer this, but um is there like a map of your poles, especially those that are the P-two, P-three poles? For, to be able to target, you know, tree trimming around those poles to protect them as best as possible until they can be replaced?
Yes, there is. Um, so we do have it. It is public facing. It does show some of the poles that need to be replaced. Um, I haven't gone on and personally looked at it in about a month or two, but yeah, all of our P-one poles should be identified on that.
Thank you. Um, two more questions if I have the ability. Um, one was, is, is there an inventory of the equipment within the city of Lake Forest Park that identifies their age and and kind of their status a- apart from the poles, just kind of the whole system?
Um, not, not something that I could pull out today. I mean, it's, it's, it's within our system, but it would take quite a bit of a data search to um be able to isolate everything. And and really, for what's in this area, I mean, you're talking about a minimum of underground structure of infrastructure such as the, the transformers and you're talking about pole assets for the majority. Uh, because again, the the major infrastructure is located in the Shoreline Substation. Um, so uh, the list that you have might be a little bit underwhelming other than our overhead transformers. That's about the only other major infrastructure that we would normally track.
Okay.
So, so yes, we could find the age of those. We could find age of, uh, well, we have good asset data on all of our poles. So that would simply be a matter of running a query. Um, the, the feeder lines themselves have been uh assessed uh within the last two years. Uh, so we have good knowledge of what's there.
I think it might go a long way to helping us, you know, s- see what our system is, if we could have something like that. Um, and then the other area that I'm curious about is what percentage of investment is being made in this area versus other areas based off of population? Is that a a metric that you're able to pull out of your database?
Uh, again, yes, but it would take some time to be able to do that. Um, you know, just realize that, you know, our, our investment in our system typically with encumbrances and carryforwards, we're looking at, you know, uh, four-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar capital plan on an annual basis.
Thank you. I think.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Councilmember Riddle.
Done, thank you.
Yeah, Viceroy for Tony, please.
Yeah, thanks. And uh, I have a couple of quick uh confirmations. One of them is that um you had um I, I, I think I wrote it down right, but now I'm in doubt. To underground the wire was six thousand or six million per mile?
Six-point-three million dollars per mile.
Thank you, okay. And then then uh the above-ground equivalent was seven-hundred-thousand then per mile?
Y- again, yeah, I use this as a, just a, a, a quick reference. Obviously, it depends upon the, the terrain and 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 other variables for both. You know, I would use those as an average.
Sure. All right, thanks. And the other one is, again, not related to the bomb cyclone outage, but um we have a roundabout project that's going up on uh a one oh four. And there was some concern that uh um vault, the uh electrical vault had to be moved because of the scope and nature of our project to make that roundabout. But the problem was, I believe, that initially the location and size of that vault was misrepresented on your plans. And so since this is asset management, I was going to ask you, is there a systematic look at, you know, reassessing the uh inventory that you have of these kinds of assets? Not poles and not transformers, but literally things like vaults to make sure that they're accurate? Because uh, you know, I can see um as we fix our roads, we put in sidewalks and things like that, more of this kind of stuff is going to happen, we're probably going to have to cut into grade. And of course, knowing where these assets are super important. So can you speak to that?
Yeah, I, I can't. So I'm vaguely aware of the roundabout project. I remember seeing the plans about a year ago. Um, I can't speak to the specifics of where that sits right now on the design basis. Um, most of those type of assets are located on our G I S system, so we should have good coordinates. I couldn't speak to why this particular system was so misrepresented.
Right, thanks. Colleagues, other questions for Mr. Strong? I have a couple, if I may. Um. One, uh, I've noticed over the years that we'll suddenly see a delivery of utility poles on the ground and they sit for a year in our ditches and block our ability for our public works crews to do what they need to do in the right of way. The other question that I would like to ask is, there are a lot of orphaned poles that are sistered up, strapped together. And you, the electrical utilities, your proportion have been moved over. But for example, in my neighborhood, I've got a pole that's been cut off, sitting on bricks for eight years and there's one lone little telco wire hanging on it. And I'll be honest with you, I've been very concerned that that pole's going to come down because it's put together with bailing wire.
If, if you have a chance, I would love to get the seven-digit number that's on the pole that's standing, that's in good order. If you could, you can, you're welcome to send that to me directly or you could put it in on our Find It, Fix It app. Um, this is all over my neighborhood as well. I um live in the Maple Leaf area of Seattle and it's all over and and so the arrangement here is, uh, I talked a little bit of before about, you know, we own a hundred-and-ten-thousand vertical um structures. Ninety-two-thousand of those are wooden utility poles. Of those ninety-two-thousand, eighty percent are shared with Lumen. So why Lumen? Well, this goes all the way back to the Ma Bell days where um um, you know, the phone company and the utility companies worked in close proximity to um erect vertical infrastructure. So the way the arrangement's supposed to work, and I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus, but it's reality, um. We go in first and we replace a bad order pole. Um, and all of these poles are ba- in bad shape, as as you alluded to earlier. Um, and we move our infrastructure over. And then we have a process where we notify everyone that's supposed to be on the pole and they are the telecoms. Uh, they're fiber companies and 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 other telecom infrastructure. Um, there's, they have a three-week period of time when they're supposed to come in and move their infrastructure over. And then ultimately, Lumen comes in afterwards, they remove the, the half-pole that's remaining there and then they restore the area and we're done. Um, the telecoms aren't doing a good job of doing their, their part and we lack a really good hammer to force them to do this. And unfortunately, it's very easy in our notification system to kind of lose track of that because again, um, they're supposed to do their bit, they're supposed to sign off on the software program that we have and then the next entity picks it up. Uh, we're trying to solve that. We are trying to allow us to um get a reasonable degree of a, of fine program that we could uh use to force this. Um, but again, it's, it's hard to um, you know, keep the, the resources on it that we have to. Uh, we work very closely with these telecoms. We're in partnership with them. We do a lot of the new infrastructure quite well with them. This is probably a point where we could do better.
Well, I thank you. You actually segued into my last question, which is the intersection of the telcos and the utility poles. It's a, it's, as our guests indicated tonight, it is a real challenge. Uh, we have places literally, I can point, I could walk you over a hundred yards from here where they literally could not get a truck underneath some of the cables to get into their driveway. And we're going to be looking at a hammer here, franchise-wise and other ways, and codify also some requirements. Um, we, my feeling has been for a very long time that while the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six was a great step forward for technology, sure as heck has not been aesthetically very pleasing for us now. And I think we've got to figure out both at the federal level, state and local level, how to make sure that the telcos don't leave wires hanging over hedges, hedges, dead wires hanging just randomly in places. And the last thing on point uh about power outages, I noticed when I drove around at midnight during the bomb cyclone that there were several places where it appeared that the utility poles came down because the trees struck the lower uh fiber optics or struck the telco lines. And that's an, even if the um, even if the electrical lines are undergrounded and I would assume that the telco lines would be undergrounded, but I, I don't think I'll be on this planet to see all of those undergrounded. Um, we still have that issue. And I hope that we can work collaborat- collaboratively with you folks to find solutions regionally to make sure that the telcos are held accountable because they are definitely contributing to the power outages, not to give y'all a pass. But I, but, but it, you see it and and I certainly definitively saw it that night when I was driving around trying to support our public works team.
Yeah, and and to your constituents, please, you know, um, do take a look at the, the pole number that we just installed. Uh, grab the seven-digit number, um, let myself know or one of us here tonight. And um, we might be able to track the, the telecom down and and give you some help there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Strong. We really appreciate your thought.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. I would like to, at this point, turn this over to Mike Haynes, our chief operating officer.
Yes, you may. Absolutely, chief, please.
All right, I just have a couple of questions that he probably. So, one is, there's a perception that we're last to be taken care of in the region. Um, if you can speak on that and how that all works. Second is, is we had our emergency manager calling on uh when some of these things would be finished. The reasoning was that you're, you have employees that have to go on an eight-hour minimum break in between. Um, but we were gonna, is that what you?
Yeah, I can talk to that.
Then excellent, um, because I, I know that there's a staffing issue and why wouldn't you uh have a overlap of time instead of scheduling everybody at once? Um, and then the third thing is, is City Hall was without power, power for a very long time. Why is City Hall not at priority over other areas? So those are the three things that uh I wanted to make sure.
And, and those are good points.
Thank you.
Uh, man, I just want to do a time check. I know we were supposed to hold this to twenty minutes, so.
We, we have all the time in the world, don't we, colleagues?
This is important. And, and we appreciate all of you coming and spending your time here. So I greatly appreciate it. Let's, let's take the time.
Yeah, thank you for checking.
All right, away we go. Um, and thank you, chief, for those comments. Okay, uh, great to be here. Uh, I actually grew up here, right up on Forest Park Drive. Um, I stomped in grounds. I went to school with, with John and his brother. Um, so it's ni- it's nice to be back. Um. So the um, incident overview, let's see, let's go to, there we go. Uh, I'm just going to give you some stats, a little bit about, um, you know, the intensity of the storm. I think we all felt it. We all saw a lot of it. And um, I'm just going to talk real quickly about some of the numbers that that we pay attention to. So for, for City Light, the, at the peak, which was roughly eleven P M on uh the nineteenth, that Tuesday night, we were at a hundred-and-fourteen-thousand uh outages, um, as measured by our, by our system. And that um number, just in comparison, uh, regionally for the same event, about six-hundred-thousand, mostly west of the Cascades, all the way up into Vancouver, uh, six-hundred-thousand outages, uh, roughly. Um, compared to the storm, if you were around in two thousand and six, just as a metric, the Hanukkah Eve Storm, roughly one-point-five-million regionally. uh, the Hanukkah Eve storm, uh, roughly one point five million regionally, uh, suffered outages during that event. City Light, we were around a hundred and fifty thousand. For us, uh, that event, that restoration took, uh, the better part of two weeks. So I think thirteen days for, to restore during the two thousand and six event. Just a little bit of history, I thought it might provide some context. And then, um, knowing with this event, we have actually pretty good forecasting. Within about three days of an event, we all kind of heard about this. And then within about three days, our, our wind for, forecasting is actually pretty good. We work with Cliff Moss at the University of Washington. He, he's designed a model for us and we paid close attention to that. So knowing that this was going to be a big deal, we anticipated it was going to be a big deal. We actually on Tuesday sat down with my directors and, um, we intentionally, uh, held our crews over from the day shift and just had them stay at the service center. So we have two service centers, one north, one south. South end is, is right there on Spokane Street. The North Service Center is right off of, uh, Ninety-seventh. Just north of Blanchett High School. And at the same time, we stood up our incident management team. Uh, and that's really to make sure that City Light internally, uh, from the management all the way down to the boots on the ground, that we have people, um, staged, ready for, for doing work in the field, but also for coordinating the work and the activities necessary from the office and from policy and from, uh, procurement and finance and, and labor, everybody gets involved from the get-go. And as, as was mentioned earlier, and I think we've touched a little bit about priorities, the chief just mentioned priorities, our priorities, um, start with, uh, a lot of the key customers that, that Sandra and Del C to pay attention to, but also, um, critical facilities, hospitals. First, we monitor facilities, uh, institutions. And then also, um, large blocks that we can restore with, um, focused efforts. And some of that, in this event, as an example, uh, some of, we lost transmission, which is the high tension lines, the two hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and fifteen thousand volt lines that, for our system, they come in from Bothell and from all over the, the area. Puget, uh, lost a bunch of transmission for this event. Um, in order to restore power to the substations, you have to restore the transmission lines. And so that becomes, uh, priority one is to make sure that we can get transmission into our substations. And then from the substations, Andy talked about the feeders, those feeders then go out into the neighborhoods and this, and the areas like we are here today. And then from there, we, we do look at large blocks. If there's opportunities to restore, uh, thousands, if not ten thousand at a time, we will focus on those areas because, uh, the damage is, is perhaps acute and something that we can get to pretty quickly. Some of that we can sectionalize. Andy talked about a little bit about some of the automatic devices that we have. And then we work on, um, building our crews to support the big stuff. And the big stuff equates to what happened here at Lake Forest Park, what happened in West Seattle, Sandpoint Way, um, all the way up, you know, Inverness Community, up that hillside there. Heavily damaged, uh, up that way to Skyway, um, areas like that, heavily wooded areas. Um, with narrow right of ways with a lot of tall trees that took literally the entire tree uproot and, and took down not just our line, but, but the poles and everything that went with it. So right down here on Brookside is the, the big area that, that was mentioned earlier. We, uh, um, you know, we, we, uh, it takes a while to get to the point where we can actually start restoring a, a, a section like that. What I will say is, is that, um, I moved to the next slide. Oops. How do I go back? There we go. Okay, um, so, so as we set priorities, um, uh, you know, building up on that and, and getting some of the major lo- blocks of customers restored and then, and then focusing on, on the, the major damage areas like Lake Forest Park and some of the areas I, I mentioned. That then becomes, uh, building larger crews. In the case of Lake Forest Park, um, we actually, once we had resolved a lot of the access issues, both here and other parts of our service territory, uh, we made the call out for mutual aid. We called in crews from Avista out of Spokane and, and we called in crews from Tacoma Power. Um, they mobilized within, uh, twelve hours of Vista. You know, it's a long drive coming across the mountains, but, um, they got here and went to work right away. And they were actually the crews that were here focused on working that, that outage here in Lake Forest Park and doing all the restoration here. So, um, our crews, um, we, we build like five and six-person crews to do the big stuff. Sometimes we have to double up on those, uh, just because of the nature of, of the work. And then for some of them, some of the, uh, smaller, uh, outages, we, we do like two-person service crews that can do quick order work. Some of that work is, is individual customers. That's the work that takes the longest on the, at the end of an event like this. Just because of the nature of, of going almost house by house, pole by pole to, to get to those folks. So I know it's not a perfect answer on the, on the priorities. I know it feels like Lake Forest Park was last. It's, it's, it's not by design, it's, it's by the fact that that's, that's how we mobilized our crews. That's how, uh, the nature of the restoration happened. Yeah, go ahead.
So we had big blocks of households, well over five hundred households with power out, even though your outage map was erroneous at times. Um, we have two elementary schools. We had our city hall. We had acute damage. We had our town center. So I think by your own criteria, I think we, oh, and periodically it would say that crews had been dispatched, but no one was here. And so, uh, or it would give a time, estimated time of, uh, of resumption of service like, you know, in the next twenty-four hours or something. Your outward facing system was the worst we had ever experienced and completely inaccurate. But, but having said that, I think that we should have, had, we hit so many priority criteria. I fail to understand why we didn't get a crew till Friday. Um, and so I can understand, uh, what Ms. Lindell said, that, um, that you're down crews, um, and it takes a while for mutual assistance to come in. But I hope that when you're hiring, that you're restoring all six crews for the future. Because these are going to be, it just sounds like you're never going to quite catch up with the infrastructure.
Right.
Uh, and, and the weather is gonna, you know, get away from all of us. So I just wanted you to address the priority because, uh, like the, like the chief, I had the sense, well, maybe because we're not in the Seattle city limits, we're, we're checking all these boxes. And yet we're, we're, and, and we're seeing that it says service was dispatched. And yet that was inaccurate and it didn't happen till Friday.
Yeah, I think, you know, um, we could probably talk priorities for a long time. I don't know that I'll ever be able to satisfy your, your, um, your question there completely. I think that as it relates to the outage map, we recognize, and I think Dawn's going to touch on this a little bit, but we recognize the outage map had issues from, from the very beginning. We, we even had power fluctuations at our service center that affected our ability to to get into our AVR system, RVR system and our outage management system. We rectified that pretty quickly because we had backup generation and things like that. But, um, so, um, we learned a lot about our outage management system. As I was mentioning to you before the meeting, it's, it's brand new. And, uh, we, we found that it was overloaded pretty quickly, um, even though we do load testing and, 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 uh, extensive testing on the, on the new system when we do go live with it. This, this event definitely over, overwhelmed it. We quickly remedied that, but the, the communication and the things that you're speaking to in terms of the information and the way it was updating, we recognize there's still, there was still a gap there all the way until the end of the outage. And so that's why we, we got our, our communications team, Julie Moore and her team, working right alongside, uh, our incident management group.
A follow-up to that. So did you have accurate information internally? And it was just the outward facing that was inaccurate? You knew, for example, that huge blocks of Sheridan Beach and, um, other parts of Lake Forest Park had no power and that, that teams had not been dispatched. And, you know, because the, so the outward facing was inaccurate, but you had accurate information?
Yeah, at our control center, we, we always knew where the outages were. And we could relay that information to our comm people and then they could, they could manually.
The people you would call on the phone did not know that, though. So, um, they, they were just saying, no, that outage has been resolved. We'll put your house back on the map. And then it reset the time.
Right.
As if there was an outage for just one or whoever's household called in.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
At least I appreciate that you had the, the accurate information.
Yes.
Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you. And continuing on the theme of communication, because we do have, uh, some households that are, uh, PSC, I get the PSC, uh, emails of, of, uh, whenever there's an event. And between the eighteenth and the twenty-sixth, I received sixteen emails updating what was happening in their system. And I know PSC is, is, covers a lot of area. Do you have any plans to create a communication system that's more active, that can alert people who want to be alerted on, on a, on a listserv? What's going on? You know, I think that just the nothingness was just unacceptable.
Yeah, um, are you loud and clear? And the answer is yes. That project is actually kicking off this year. We want to create some of the, some of the capability that you're talking about and hopefully get to a point where we can actually text message people that are willing to, uh, receive information by text. Because that for us is, is something that we can do a lot easier. So that, that's an evolution of our, uh, response that we're working on this year and next year. And, and hopefully that'll, that'll, that'll take care of a lot of that kind of incidental communications that was taking place. But Deputy Mayor Bodie, I think that, uh, we recognize that there was a lot of gaps that night in the information that was outward facing and, and we are definitely, um, most of that has been rectified.
They say in your favor, previous years, it was all more accurate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the old system.
I, I'm not complaining long-term.
Yeah.
Councilmember Goldman.
Thanks. Um, I also want to ask about communications. So this, this was not just a power outage. Um, in my neighborhood Comcast was out, T-Mobile was out, Verizon was out. And so how do you have a plan? And this isn't, it's not just for you, but for the city, for NEMCO. How do we communicate with the public when they have no power, landline, cell phone or internet?
Emergency radio. Well, giving a shout out to Kevin over there.
Yeah, you know, I, that's, that's a hard, but, but I will say that, um, the good thing is, is that the, the cell companies do have backup generation at most of their towers. I think they learned a lot from this event, too. Some of their fair amount of towers were out for T-Mobile, for Verizon. And we were paying attention to that because we, we use the same technology, right? To communicate with our crews, although we do have radios, um, as well. So, so that's where, you know, the, the cellular technology is, is probably going to be part of that answer to that. Because if Comcast has a fiber line down and it takes them a long time to repair that, we, you know, that's just going to take time. And most often, you know, if, obviously if we lose a pole, they're going to lose a line at the same time that we do. So, um, but for us, we were, we relied a lot on cellular communication throughout this whole event, as did Puget, because we were in communication with them as well, so.
And in my neighborhood, we had no cell servers for twenty-four to thirty-six hours.
Yeah. Yeah, there, there was a lot of pockets like that because certain towers were just out of power, so, yeah. Yeah, I don't have a great answer for that. I think, you know, we're, we're kind of relying on technology for a lot of this. And we, we're also, you know, on a common, uh, communication system with emergency responders. So we're, we are paying attention to, to that. We have the ability to, to network with fire and police during events like this. If we need to, through radio communications, we, we do have that capability as well, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Did you have a follow-up or you, okay. Colleagues, other questions? I have a couple of tag along questions here, I may. Yeah, relative to the communication, you know, I will tip my hat to Julian Low from PSC. I, dozens of emails from him, uh, not one from our rep. I received nothing.
I do know we were in touch with, um, Kevin Lowery throughout this event.
And I think, I think the thing is too, that the, the technology question, I, I've been in tech thirty-five years. Customer facing, if it's broken, turn it off and take the hit. Don't give them false information. Because my phone blew up over and over again. What is it coming back on? And the only answer I had was your system. And when the system was giving me ghosts every single day, then I'm propagating misinformation. So that's a real, as a tech guy, I'd be going through that department with a fine-tooth comb and figuring out where the disconnect is. I know local people here have done a PRR about communications in the tech department. I would do the same thing yourselves. Pull it up, take a look at it. It's a mess and it's, it's really, to put a finer point on it, it absolutely unprofessional and unacceptable. And if you're going to rely on technology, it'd either work or turn it off. Because that, when it's mission critical like that and people are counting on getting the heat to their homes, whatever else, giving them hope for twenty-four hours, they get dropped. Their hopes raised, it's dropped. That went on for a number of days and even on the last day, goodness, power came up on part of the city. And I was told that wasn't, then I had finally been told by one of the crew members, oh, it's not going to come up until tomorrow. Then it suddenly came on. I was like, hallelujah. But then the other half of our mall was out. And so what do I say to the, the manager of Albertson's? Why is his power not on? And these guys suddenly got their power. So this is, I'm not saying it's just me, it's that the entire team, staff had to deal with these kinds of situations. And I think the biggest thing for us, takeaway for us, is that we need to make sure that we can rely on you folks for communication about the reality of the situation. And in the absence, if you don't know, I tell the team this all the time, if you don't know the answer, that's okay. Just make sure you have a way of following up on it in a short period of time. So having said that, um, Mr. Haynes, I appreciate your time. We all do. I, we sincerely, I think the last time Seattle City Light, um, came before this body was two thousand thirteen. In not quite similar circumstances, but it resulted in an additional couple, one or two feeder lines brought in for redundancies so that we didn't have the same issues that we had before. And to your credit, the lower, the, the outage lengths have decreased from the two thousand and six level of, my house was out for eleven and a half days. So, Mr. Levo.
Well, thank you for the presentation and the discussion this evening. And you'd mentioned that you had done an after-action review. Bomb cyclone hits, a couple of questions. One is, how would you rate your performance, um, with regard to this last one in Lake Forest Park? Is it a B? Is it a C? But you also mentioned an after-action review. And so if this event occurred next week, what have you learned based upon your after-action review that you would do differently next week?
Yeah, I think, um, out of the gate, you know, and one thing that Andy and I have already started working on is, is, uh, damage assessment. I think we, uh, we did a good job on damage assessment. I think we could have done more assessment quicker with more resources on the ground. And for us, that's additional training for people that don't normally do that work. So that's something we're going to prioritize this year. That's, that's one key takeaway. It's something that we learned back in two thousand and six. Uh, we have done versions of that over the years since then. But in this case, um, because, uh, no excuses, we, we just don't, didn't have the number of trained people to do assessment that, that we would like to, like to see. So we're going to shore that up and bring more of that to bear. And that way we can get like even engineers out on the ground, um, assessing damage ahead of, uh, the high voltage workers. So that we don't have to use necessarily high voltage workers to do all of that pre-work, right? The other kind of main takeaway we've been, we've been talking about quite a bit is technology and communications. And we hear you loud and clear on that. And I think, um, you know, we, we. Um, you know, we 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 were frustrated with with that same technology. Uh, we found ways we thought that were improving the information that was going out. Deputy Mayor Bodie, I hear you a lot of that that it was it was never perfect. I think that um. You know, we we did make a lot of adjustments in real time so that um the people on those calls on at the call center. Excuse me, had had the best information available. Um, and they participated in incident management. They're on every one of our, we did two calls a day during the entire event up through uh Sunday afternoon. And the IVR team was on on those, every one of those calls, and so they got the benefit of the discussion and the status on a big scale. And then they also um had access to um getting information coming in from the field. Whether estimated time of restorations, because those were not working on the map either. Um, and that information has started coming directly from the crews on the ground, give us a little bit more detail and.
Can I say even on Thursday, that was not occurring when we were calling? Um, and neighbors were calling. We were not getting updated information on the outage and the restoration time. Um, so from the person on the phone, so I appreciate that. I just would suggest that that could be enhanced.
Yep, very loud and clear. Thank you. So uh, so Ca- Councilmember Levo is is um, those are the main takeaways, damage assessment, communications, and then technology.
So if we had another event next week or a month from now, would we see a difference in response back to service? Or is that something that's gonna take time within Seattle City Light to develop the tools? Uh, whether it's communication or agreements with other utilities to for faster response or assessment? Would we see the same kind of response in terms of back to service if another event occurred this winter? Um, or is it really, you know, a a year, two years before you can build up the knowledge and infrastructure within Seattle City Light? To provide a a quicker response to return to service?
Yeah, you know, it's it's a great question. We get that a lot, so I appreciate it. I think very thoughtful. I think that um. One way I answer that is that our after, our assessment after the fact. Uh, we we think we could have probably improved our performance by about twenty-four hours.
Okay.
Um, best cir- best circumstances, and that means we probably probably would have made the call on mutual aid about a half a day earlier than we did. Um, there's a lot of moving parts. Um, some of these roads down here, we we couldn't access. We had had to clear trees off the roadway. It was the same same thing, even in in Seattle, same same issues. Um, so, you know, that I think, you know, we could have improved by about twenty-four hours. Um, just the intensity of the storm and the the extent of the damage. Um, and the number of trees that came down, I doubt we could have done much better than that, even if we had more bodies on the ground.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Councilmember uh Riddle.
Thank you. When it comes to damage assessment, it sounds like you really need to get crews out there on the ground. Has the the conversation ever come up about having, you know, just basically crowdsourcing? I I can see the tree fell down in front of my house. Can I send a geo located photo and now you know what's happening there? And there's, I think, no reason why you can't work towards a two-way communication with your community. They're right there. They can see what's happening. At least it gives you some early insight before your crews can actually get out. Because it takes a long time to survey the entire area. And that could speed it up and actually give you better insight into where you need to target. Are you considering those types of technologies um as you're looking through improving your communication over the next year or two?
I don't wanna get into some of that, so I know um Don's probably itching to to address some of this too, because we we've talked a lot about this internally. So um, you wanna jump in? We're talking about tech.
I would, I would say uh, we actually have the ability to hear from our customers today and and to make notes about what they are seeing. Um, and that that does tell us um some information on what, you know, we knew we had uh multiple poles down in a row. For example, um, here in Lake Forest Park before we arrived unseen. What we s- what we still need to do, though, even if we've got a tree in the branches, we don't know the impact of that fault. Until we come and get eyes on, we don't know if we've just got a breaker that's tripped or if we've got wire that needs to be replaced, et cetera. So we still have to come and do that assessment, but we, um, you know, we depend on our customers to let us know what they're seeing. And they do a good job of it. So we, you know, we've actually got that. We need to enhance that with the digital communication. We need to be able to receive texts and we need need to be able to send texts and we need to be able to communicate via email. Um, I uh, I spent fifteen years of my career as a chief information officer. And coming to um the fine city of Seattle was like stepping back in time eight years. Um, from a technology standpoint, we've got a ways to go to catch up. Um, and to that end, we are um actually in the process right now. In fact, next week, we will be doing final interviews for a chief information officer. And we haven't had one, and I think it really shows. Um, we're not, um, not only are we not up to date, but we're not really focused on the technology that's coming that could be helpful. And um things like uh customer notification digitally have been happening in this industry for ten years. And, you know, P S E is way ahead of us and it's embarrassing, and I don't want to stay that way. So, so we will, uh, we do have already under underway plans to improve that. Um, Councilmember Levo, to your question, though, it is gonna take time for us to catch up in dollars. We've got some investing to do. Um, but the good news is we don't have to figure out how to do it, because everyone's done it ahead of us. So we can, um, you know, I think we we can do that without a lot of hassle.
Councilmember Levo.
So uh, investing is always something difficult to do, um, whether it's retiring, to buy a home, buy a car, go on vacation. Um, are you investing enough? Meaning, are you generating enough revenue uh through your rate increases? Because when you showed the earlier slide about percentages, they actually mean nothing, because it's a percentage of something, you know? A dollar more than a dollar is a hundred percent. But a dollar more than a million dollars is not very much. Um, are you, are you generating enough revenue to invest? And also, do you have the sort of um master plan to actually know where to invest? Whether it's in technology or infrastructure replacement asset management? Uh, because sometimes just knowing where you have something is a critical part of being able to respond in an incident. So is Seattle City Life well positioned in terms of revenue planning and goal setting? To achieve a really industry leading rather than an industry catching up um utility? I had Seattle City Life, uh, Seattle City Light service for sixty years in some form or other. And so very proud of it being a public owned utility. Um, and I would like to express that pride going forward. Um, can we do that?
Yes, I love the question. Um, we have not invested enough, nor have we planned um in the out years to invest enough. So um, coming in uh to this utility, and again, I started in February. Um, one thing I was missing was that plan. So we actually started a strategic planning effort, developing a ten-year strategy roadmap. Um, we are in the process of doing that now, and we will have it not only in um, in um. Capital uh for our infrastructure. Um, we actually have uh the team doing a full audit of our inventory of um equipment. And the state of that equipment. We also are doing the same thing in technology, and the new chief information officer will have that um immediate assignment. Uh, we also need to do the same thing with our people. We need to ensure that we're getting trained up so that we um have the the right skills in place. And that we are hiring for the skills we need today and in the future. So I think the utility has done a really good job of managing costs really, really tightly. And to that end, um. Perhaps we deferred some maintenance that we needed to start on a little bit earlier. Um, and we tried some things around technology. Um, in terms terms of combining that with the city of Seattle, some of which worked and some of which has not worked at all. And so we're we're making the changes that we need to make. And we are taking, uh, I think, the right steps to get that plan in place. So that when we do our next strategic plan, which is um at the end of twenty-six for twenty-seven through thirty-two. Um, we will have what we need in terms of data and information to be able to do exactly what you said, to have a good view of what we need.
So one of the things is that um this community, Seattle and Western Washington, is very supportive of sort of these public utilities. And infrastructure, where there's that vision to produce a a, whether it's an environmental a hundred percent green. Whether uh we're embracing technology. Revenue is always a issue. Is there a thought to generating a uh? A uh capital program that's bond funded to go to the voters and say, we have a vision of what we can be. And look what we've tried to do in the last few years. We've been very money tight and conscious of that, but we really need to strike forth. With a program that we want to invest, not only in your current situation, but for your children's future.
Yes, and we um we actually bond fund every year. Um, so we're not new to that. We actually do bonds every year, but we we know that we will have to do a large. A larger than usual bond issuance as we embark on this um long-term um asset replacement.
Right, but you do bonds because that's the way you generate uh the capital funding for your uh projects. But I mean, really asking the voters to give you a really good uh bond.
Um, we may need to do that, and we'll know when we finish our strategic planning. So, you know, I I don't wanna uh leap to leap to that answer until we know what that looks like, but yes.
Colleagues, other questions? For the team here? Just looking at our colleagues and friends online, uh, Councilmember Saunders, Councilmember Riddle, any last questions? Okay, thank you. Well, we sincerely appreciate uh Don, Andrew, and Mike and Craig as well, coming down here. And and the rest of the team. Uh, I know it's not easy to to be, um, we're normally not quite this ornery, but almost. Uh, and I do recognize, we all do recognize um that this was a very unusual event. Unfortunately, these unusual events seem to be more frequent than not. Uh, the fortieth place, I thought I'd seen it all, but at twelve, whatever time I was up there shining my light. Up there, I I couldn't even see the end of the carnage. It was really, really bad.
Yeah.
And the only other time I've seen it that bad was on five twenty-two, when the poles exploded and burned um in two thousand eleven thirteen or something.
Could I just express my sincere appreciations uh for the time you've spent and the detail you've gone into? We really appreciate it, and we appreciate being your partners going forward.
Yeah.
And if there is something in the funding uh and asset management and investment in infrastructure. That would be linked to Lake Forest Park that we could weigh in on. Of course, we're not in the city of Seattle, so you know how much clout we have? I don't know.
Oh, you have clout.
Yes.
There's a lot of clout.
With. I mean, with your ci- with the city council or Seattle Public Utilities. But let us know if there's an opportunity, because we don't want to all be just, you know, uh, asking and and uh. Sharing our information, but if there's something we can do to help you, we're, we would welcome that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for coming. We really appreciate your time. All the best. Give them a second to gather their. Here, okay, let's see where we are, folks. Oh, we have some easy things on our plate. Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on right now to uh the consent calendar. I entertain a motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adopt the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adoption, consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyways, the ayes have it and it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Council. Uh, we are on to ordinances and resolution for action. Let's take a maybe a two-minute. Pause here, Mr. Hill, and let our friends gather their. Yeah, 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 yeah. Let's take a, let's take a five-minute recess, you folk, everybody. So, eight fifty, everyone. Okay, everyone, thank you and welcome back. We are moving on now to ordinances and resolution. Administrator Hill is going to guide us through the adventure of resolution twenty-five nineteen ninety-five, supporting the addition of a healthy streets. Initiative within the neighborhood traffic calming program and adopting a healthy streets map. Bill.
Thank you. And if you look at the legislative history, this has been a long process, and I wanna um give a shout out to Councilmembers Goldman and Riddle. Who worked with Public Works Director and Police Chief for a lot of hours and our um traffic engineering consultant. To get this in place. The only thing you're here tonight to look at is the map. We we've we've discussed this, the program's been adopted, but the last map that you saw um identified the streets that were not allowed to have traffic. Um, calming of this, these healthy streets on there. Um, so we worked with um Transport Group and that map is attached to the resolution. Um, this has gone through several iterations and is now finally correct. Um, this, as we've mentioned in the past, will be part of the traffic calming group's review. Uh, requires seventy percent um sign-on by the neighbors. And if this type of a healthy street is the most effective um way of calming traffic in the neighborhood. It doesn't work as far as geometry for engineering solutions, then this would be the route that they would go. But um, this is the final step to uh take care of this program.
Great, thank you. Colleagues, questions for Administrator Hill? I'm sorry, Mr. Levo.
Thank you. Um, so what does this look like on the ground? Meaning, if you designate seventy percent and it's agreed that this is now a healthy street, is that a sign?
So that is the next step for our new Public Works Director is to work with our traffic engineer to. Propose some ideas of what this could look like. I think what, and I can let the two council members speak to it, but it was good. The idea was for it to be very kind of low-key, just signage, uh, maybe some plantings, things like that. This this hasn't been designed yet. I think that that's called out within what you've adopted previously is to come back with some design solutions. But it was not to physically close the street or block off one of the lanes. It was just more of a signage.
Signage, so I mean, we have seen uh Seattle did this before, as they'd put up a large barricade. So it was, it was blocking traffic.
Yeah, this, this will just um, it's it's healthy streets, local traffic only, i- i- it's it's that type of an approach. Um, just, I think we're talking about the goat trail earlier, you know, you know, local traffic only. Um, I I've I heard maybe somebody was up there driving on it, who's not local traffic, but um. Sorry, Mayor. Um, but but that's the approach. It's 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 more of the honor system. It's more of, um, you know, we're not going to go out and police it and pull people over for doing it. Um, it's just to to bring it to the attention that this is a place that focuses on multimodal uses.
Because within the, within the motion, it talks about sort of um taking over the street in terms of pedestrians, but.
I think that's walking arm in arm and pushing cars.
But I mean, realistically, though, I mean, if we're just saying that this is a signage as a healthy street, local traffic only. Pedestrians shouldn't ta- believe that they now have the right of way in the street.
Correct. I guess I guess it would depend on um how successful it was, but yeah, I mean, one of those, I believe, is right up.
The the reason I'm asking is it seems like in the motion, we're over.
Over overstating it.
Overstating what um truly is going to occur here.
You're saying within the resolution, right?
Yeah. Yeah, because it it says whereas healthy streets is a term used to describe streets that are designated as places open to people walking, rolling, biking, playing. Well, um, not allowing vehicles other than those operated by local residents, guests, blah, blah, blah. The the reality is, you know, you got a sign that doesn't, there is no expectation that we're now sort of.
Yeah.
Taking over the street and we're playing ball in the street and then the cars have to stop for us.
What I did as a kid, play kick the can and everything in the middle of the street. We just moved when the car came. Sorry, I'm just having fun with you. Um. I guess we could reword the whereas if you'd like.
Colleagues, questions for this, some, some councilmember, councilmember Riddle, there we go.
I mean, I, I, I see, you know, your point, Councilmember Lebo. If it ends up that they take over the street and the cars really are deprioritized, then it, it, then it means that that's just what that neighborhood wants and it's how they're planning on using their street. I think there's a lot of conversation about, you know, designing streets for cars, designing streets for multimodal. And these are all pretty local streets. They're, they're not our arterials. They're not our main high-volume streets. So they want us to drop a handball court in the middle of the road and play handball. Then sure, it's like when we were kids in the eighties, you yell car, you step aside. But it's, it's expected that at some point you may run across people just using the street how they want. Most people stick to the sides just because we're used to it, right? But our, it, it's going to be what the neighborhood ends up, how they want to claim their street. And as far as like the sign at the entrance, an idea came up that maybe there'd be some nice sort of road painting that would help designate it. That's a, there's a higher cost to that. There's a design element to that. So that's not really going to be something that we're going to be able to implement right away. But I think that would be more of a visual, no physical barrier, but a visual identifier. And it gives neighborhoods a chance to have some sort of identity. So it's kind of building a neighborhood identity at the same time, just as a kind of a good bonus about having this healthy street. Cars will go through, deliveries will go through. There's, there's only so much, you know, you, you've got to accept that, that, that this is still a functioning street. But it's a street that's shared now instead of car-focused where the pedestrians are secondary.
Vice Chair Furtani.
And to add to Councilmember Riddle's point, Seattle has a healthy street on twenty-seventh between about one hundred and forty-fifth and one hundred and thirtieth. And what I've noticed about it is even at five in the afternoon during rush hour, it's still seems to be used. The, the cars are only occasional. I see them turning into driveways there. So it is really sticking to that principle of the, you know, residents are the ones that are accessing it. Yeah, I do see the Amazon truck there too. But the fact is that there's a heck of a lot less volume and that's a straight shot that goes from one hundred and forty-fifth to one hundred and thirtieth. So I think this is, I don't think the wording is too overstated because I think people will get into the spirit of what this street is intended for. And what I do see on that street is a lot of couples walking with their dog. I see a lot of kids playing in the street. And I think that's kind of the vision that, you know, both Councilmember Riddle and Councilmember Goldman had for this idea. So I'm willing to give this a try.
Councilor Goldman.
Yes, I concur with Councilmembers Furtani and Riddle. Question for Administrator Hill. How, assuming we pass this, how might we publicize this to the community? You know, might this show up in the next city's newsletter, that sort of thing?
Newsletters, newsflash, on the website, it'll be part of the tools. So, yes. Just like we just did, I think you've seen the, the notification for the reduction of speed limits that's coming up at the start of February, that same type of outreach. And we just spring off that into e-news and print newsletter.
Colleagues, other questions for Administrator Hill? I just had a question about the map. I was, my understanding was that we were not going to include dead ends. We have a couple of dead ends included on here. Here, here. There was one. I think the map is showing undeveloped rightaways. So I guess we would say scrubbers errors can be taken care of in the future. These are both dead ends.
Oh, right.
And then there's, there's another one here. I just saw and I've lost it because it's too small. Mr. Lebo.
So on the map though, were school bus routes excluded or included or not considered? Because there are some of the streets that are considered for healthy streets that do include bus routes for children.
I honestly do not know the answer to that question. If school bus routes were consideration for this.
If I may, they weren't a consideration because they're a legitimate local use of the street. So we weren't trying to necessarily avoid streets that the buses would be on because they're in the spirit of collecting pedestrians, kids. And they happen, you know, twice a day. So they're not a heavy traffic item. We did avoid streets that actually fed the school itself. Obviously, those would be needing to kind of stay more open and to actually service the school.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Goldman.
Yeah, and reading section two, two, it says that healthy streets allow local vehicular traffic, emergency services and other essential vehicles. And I think it was our understanding that things like school buses would count as either local or essential, but either way they would be allowed.
Thank you, Larry. Vice Chair Furtani.
I'd like to move resolution twenty-five dash nineteen ninety-five, supporting the addition of a healthy streets initiative within the neighborhood traffic calming program and adopting a healthy streets map.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adopt resolution twenty-five nineteen ninety-five, supporting the addition of a healthy streets initiative within the neighborhood traffic calming program and adopting a healthy streets map. Do I hear any, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any ayes? Couldn't hear a couple of you. All those, the ayes have it. It passes unanimously. Thank you, colleagues. That's great. Thanks, Councilmember Riddle and Councilmember Goldman and staff for that work. I know it's been. Imagine that. We've got the healthy streets now. Speed limits are coming online here shortly. Three years of work, folks. That's pretty, that's a great job. And we're on, Mr. Hill, you may, I guess you're staying there. Resolution twenty-five nineteen ninety-six, confirming the appointment of Rebecca Dickinson as the Public Works Director. Phil?
January twenty-seventh is going to be a very good day. We had multiple applicants look very qualified on paper. We ultimately ended up interviewing two of those applicants, brought them in for interviews. Some council members helped with that. And the unanimous decision by every panel that we spoke with was for Rebecca Dickinson to fill the Public Works Director position. All the appropriate financial and background checks have been completed and references, both personal and professional, and nothing but glowing recommendations around. I think you've seen a copy and I'll scroll down and see if you have it. Yes, you do. Of her resume, I think you'll find it to be quite impressive resume, both in the public and private sector. I think she's bringing a wealth of, of knowledge and, and new ideas to Public Works Department. Our Public Works Superintendent was also on the interview panel and she was his top pick as well. It's always good when, you know, the guy on the ground, you know, just it's like, this is somebody I want to work for. Katie is excited to have, well, while she's put up with me, she's happy to have a director coming on board. So I think we're in a good position. We still need a senior public, senior project manager, but with Rebecca at the helm, I see, I see a lot of good things coming forward and and get her tour around the city on her first day. The mayor and the chief are going to take her on a tour and show her something on the, all the traffic stuff. I bowed out of that one. But I fully hope you'll support the mayor's selection of Rebecca Dickinson as the new Public Works Director.
Colleagues, any questions, Mr. Hill?
Uh, thank you. I, I didn't see in the packet, is she a licensed professional engineer?
Is not.
And so the.
So currently we do not have a licensed professional engineer on staff. Katie is actually lining up to test for that and our city engineer role is being filled by PACE engineers. Daryl Smith out of PACE Engineering is taking that role for us. Anything that needs to sign off of a professional engineer, he is doing that for us at this point in time. It is not a requirement of the Public Works Director position. It is a requirement of the Senior Project Manager position.
Thank you, Councilman Lebo. And just as a reminder, history was previous Public Works Director did not have a, a professional engineering certification. And then when he retired, we chose to hire an individual that had the professional engineering certification. And subsequent discussions after his departure have informed us that we believe that it's not specifically necessary in, in this role. I would also like to, since I was part of the interviewing team, I think Mr. Dickinson has a fantastic breadth of skills and knowledge that, and a demeanor that is very compatible with our community. She was, was stellar in her responses to the questions and her initiative to think deeper about the questions and give us additional insight into her, her approaches to different problems. I would say we were very fortunate to have a candidate like, like her in the mix. Vice Chair Furtani.
And thank you, Administrator Hill, for, and all the folks who were on the search committee. I know those are really hard to do and I appreciate her CV, which was a huge amount of different kinds of experience from small municipalities like ours, all the way up to huge tracts of land in Nevada. I'm just wondering, did you get a sense, because I wasn't on the search team, what, what, what are her communication skills like? Does she seem like the sort of person who could explain complex, let's say zoning issues to groups of like our residents?
Well, we'll let Mark explain the complex zoning issues, but yes, she has amazing communication skills. I think everybody found her to be very well-spoken, very articulate. And, you know, there, there's been some questions also asked about, you know, is she willing to get down in the dirt? Yeah, she is. She's, she, you know, does, I guess you call it ride-alongs with the Public Works crew. She will get out and, you know, lend a hand if, if they need her, you know, it's, it's a union. So that's a little different, but she will get out in the trenches and at least be on site. And that's, that, that is a good quality in that, in that position.
Yeah, I, one of the questions that was asked of hers, would she be, we're a small team here. Would she be willing to do, would she be able to kind of uphold the idea of whatever she asks somebody else to do, she'd be willing to do herself and add her answers to some of that in that regard? So colleagues, other questions? Mr. Goldman, you look like you're.
Well, no, if there weren't any other questions, I was going to make the motion.
So was I.
Yeah, I'll.
Overachievers, you.
I'll move resolution twenty-five nineteen ninety-six, confirming the appointment of Rebecca Dickinson as the Public Works Director.
And I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty-five nineteen eighty-six, confirming the appointment of Rebecca Dickinson as the Public Works Director. Any further discussion, colleagues? I will say this is an outstanding choice and I know she will do bring a great deal of contributions to our community. And I know Mr. Hill has a few months of getting her on board, but we'll get there and I really look forward to getting Phil back full-time in the administration side of things.
Second time in my life I've played Public Works.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. And you, you've done it with, with dignity and, and distinction, Phil. All those in favor of adoption of resolution twenty-five nineteen six, nineteen ninety-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any ayes? The ayes have it. It passes unanimously. Thank you, council, very much. Thank you, Mr. Hill. And many congratulations to Ms. Dickinson for joining the team. Come soon enough. And we have stricken the res, item C, resolution twenty-five nineteen ninety-seven on the CIP for further discussion, further improvements to the plan and that will be brought back to the council in February, early February. Other topics of business, Vice Chair Furtani, you had a topic.
So I'd like to, and I think the deputy mayor can chime in here too. We'd like the council to start considering when our retreat should be. Deputy Mayor, do you have any comments about that?
Yes, we were thinking about Saturday in February, but not the holiday weekend. So I think the question is, is, is there a preference with your calendar? Because we might as well do this while we have everybody but Councilmember Good here. There's the eighth and the twenty-second. And then potentially, I guess, March first. Preferences. The eighth might be hard to get ready for.
The twenty-second would be part of my daughter's midwinter break. And I'm, we, we may be traveling. We haven't figured that out yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I would prefer March first.
March first.
Isn't that what you mentioned? Isn't that what you said?
Yes, I am seeing head nods for March first. So March first it is, and we will try to at least focus on master plans and so forth.
Let's check with staff.
That would be good to check with staff. We don't have.
Leadership, leadership team, how does March first seem to you all?
We do not have a location as of.
I mean, the date is fine. I guess we would need to know what the ask of staff is, given the current workload, what kind of support you need ahead of time. I, I don't see this at the same levels last year, I would assume, but.
This is more blue sky than we're probably okay.
Focusing on our existing plans or proposed master plans and kind of having a discussion of each intern and what the plan is so we're all on the same page.
Okay, and would it be appropriate to bring your top five from last year? Because I think, you know, we've got those priorities and they're just starting to get going. And so how this all fits in with those.
That would, that would be, I think, a very good use of time, those two kind of buckets of things.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Vice Chair. Just to staff, it's speak now or forever. Hold your peace because we'll get this train rolling. Okay, Matt, you're good? All right. And just checking you, Simra and, and Ellen, you're both, you're both happy too. Great. Thank you. How easy was that?
Thank you. Thank our vice chair for reminding us to wish the pin was down.
Thank you for that. And then you had another topic.
So one other thing, which was that I wanted to acknowledge the role of our shoreline fire department. And they're sending one crew plus one type one engine, according to Kevin Lowry, down to California to help in the fighting all the blazes down there. So I know that a lot of our residents have relations or friends who live in Southern California and are rightfully concerned about, and our thoughts and prayers are going to all the people affected down there. I think it's great that our little part of the world can show a material support for that effort.
Thank you, Vice Chair Furtani. And just before this tonight's meeting, my brother sent me his copy of the emergency alert he just received. So he's evacuating, right? Or actually, hopefully, if you're, hopefully he's out of there. He is southeast LA. Yeah, he used to be in Hollywood Hills and then north of that too. But pretty, pretty terrifying and our hearts and prayers, our thoughts and prayers go out to all the people that are affected by this and the first responders. It's, I, I think tomorrow is going to dawn a day that we're, we'll probably never forget, unfortunately. Pacific Palisades is completely gone. Everybody.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse the absence of Councilmember Good.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to excuse Councilmember Good. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
Nay.
Nay.
Hold on. You guys got to get your act together. Let the record reflect, it's forwarded to, that's a first. I, I don't know. Paul might be offended, y'all. Thank you, council. Moving on, council member reports or council committee reports. Nothing has happened recently. Deputy Rebo.
We did have Sound Cities Policy Issues Committee the first of the year. Last night, we have a lot of new members as well as a bunch of members who have been around for thirteen. And in one case, I think Tova has been on for like fifteen years.
He has, yeah.
So it's quite a mixture. We're hoping to reinvigorate that committee. It had kind of a slow year last year. And I just repeat my request that if someone wants to be an alternate to me, I used to be the alternate to Tom.
Yep.
And so it is very interesting and it's all on Zoom pretty much. And so you just learn what a lot of other cities are talking about and experiencing. And there's a lot of commonality. So I just encourage, if you're interested, let me know.
And to entice Vice Chair Furtani, the aforementioned council member Tole Marts is a rocket scientist with Blue Origin.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah. So you guys would have a lot to talk about. Other council member or council committee reports? Other council member or council committee reports? Let's see, Mayor's report really quickly. I want to give a huge shout out to the PD for all their efforts during the holidays. There were some very, very challenging, unfortunately tragic situations. Fortunately, they, there are explanations ostensibly. So our hearts go out to the families that were involved in the various issues and, but the PD, it was all hands on deck for, on a couple of events and people had to be called in on Christmas Day as well, which we thank them very much for their, their sacrifice and, and, and being away from the, absolutely, Chief.
Can, can you just say it? Today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So thank you for appreciating us.
I won't miss that. Okay, we're gonna have to fire our proclamation guy. Thank you, Chief, for, for reminding us of that. Yeah, anyway, there were a lot, there were lots of things going on over the holidays. I hope you all had a restful and pleasant holiday season. I would say for this new year, I am hugely energized by the enormous lift that you all did last year. And I'm hoping this year is going to be a lot more calm and measured and less emergent on, and many topics, as well as looking forward to building various programs that we have put in motion many years ago, including traffic calming, healthy streets, pedestrian safety and building on the traffic camera program to ensure the safety of our, our, our citizens. I will say that we're going to be putting together a short snippet of the accomplishments of the, the group last year to get out to the public here. It's going to take a little time to catch our breath and get that all put together. So the community can recognize the enormous amount of work that you all did and the staff did to get through so many different topics, resolutions, ordinances, contracts, you name it, hiring. And it's important for us to ensure that the public is informed of the amount of work that you guys do. I thank you all for your dedication. You all are the Uber volunteers of this community and I really do look forward to, to a great new year. Hopefully we won't have any issues because of other parts of the country, but we'll, we'll see how, how it goes. And again, many thanks to the staff. It has been a, last year was, was the amount of work that got, was accomplished last year with limited number of people and empty seats and chairs. Now we're getting close to being fully staffed. We've got a couple more to go. And finance, congratulations, fully staffed now, Director Vaughn. And the last thing I will say is we have a couple, three new employees, two, two new this week, right? No, three, two, two. I haven't met everybody. Phil, you can talk this, but we say hi if you see, see somebody walking around. So we have a new individual in, in planning and new individual in finance. So yeah. See, not everybody even knows, so I don't feel too bad. If I'm missing anybody, please admonish me. Mr. Hill, save me from myself. Any, any comments on the city administrator's report?
No, just remember that staff and a few council members are, are working hard towards bringing information before the public on a possible levy. There will be discussions around April of, you know, if, if you are going to do that, what that rate might look like. And then by July, council meeting, last meeting in July, you do have to, you would have to take action if you were going to put that on the ballot in November. So we're just now getting going after the, the start of the new year and there's going to be a lot of work coming our way on that front.
Yes. And can I just add, we are going to get information out on the results of the survey to the community too. I think that's important. So there's feedback and actually since we're talking, I just want to say thank you to all of you there, sitting here with us. We couldn't do this without you and the, the five of you are extra special in our hearts.
Thank you, Deputy Rambo. And on the subject of the survey, I, I, Liz will probably kill me. But I want to say way to go Lake Forest Park. We had an enormous number of respondents and that really is a huge reflection on the commitment of this community to be, stay engaged and try to be involved in the decision-making process. And it, as policymakers, my goodness, you couldn't ask for more. Some communities don't get any response, responses or very low responses. And we had significant number of responses, actually. Probably hit, hit an historic number. So anything else for the good of the order, folks? With that, I bid you all a good night and we'll see you shortly. All the best.
Good night. Good night.
Good night, you guys. Take care.
You too.